John, how are you?
Yeah.
That was the big chunk of this.
Yeah.
Who was, who was the chunk?
And I know you're, I know you're a favorite.
Absolutely.
Neither. No. Not until they start tossing.
Maybe one or two.
Yeah.
Okay, welcome everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order for March fourteenth, our regular city council meeting, and we have a pledge of allegiance this evening by Ms. Peyton Brannum. Come on down and we've got the microphone all ready for you. If you could please rise. Right in front of me. You could pull that down if you'd like.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Peyton. You could be seated now, except we also have our, so you could be, you could go back to your seat, sorry. It's a little confusing. Um, and we are now going to have our invocation with Pastor Mario from the Rock Church. Hello.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. It's an honor to be here. If we could take a moment and pray. God of peace, we acknowledge your presence here with us today. We are grateful for the opportunity to be here with one another and to work together in a spirit of unity. Tonight, we pray for the well-being of all in attendance. May you bless their mind, body, and soul. We also pray for our community leaders, that you would bless them with the necessary wisdom and grace to lead with excellence. God grants us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is good, right, and true. Help us to honor each other today as we work for the common good. We want to be godly in our actions with one another, being slow to speak, quick to listen, and valuing the opinions of others. Remind each person here that you have called them to great things and that you have equipped them for a time such as this. We pray all this in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen. All right, now you could please be seated. All right, so now could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sonella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, now moving on to proclamations and presentations, if the council could please join me in front. Okay, well, one of, one of my favorite things is positive things here in the city. And what we really like to do is make sure that we recognize people that are doing wonderful things in our community. And Ms. Peyton here, uh, and look at her, she's all got her beautiful crown on. She's a role model and we're really excited to have her here this evening. As you all saw, um, we had her also, um, do our pledge of allegiance this evening. Peyton, if you could come on down, that would be great. You look amazing. Anyway, we're recognizing Peyton because she is, um, we're now, you're an honorable certificate of recognition for being crowned Miss California Role Model. Peyton has completed countless hours of community service, including serving as ambassador for Ocean Warriors, volunteering at local animal shelters, and helping fill 1,000 bags for people in need. Therefore, we, the City Council of the City of San Marcos hereby commend and recognize you for your community role and your recognition of all the amazing things that you've done. Would you like to say a few words? By the way, I love your crown. No one will give me one, but it's okay. Would you like to say a few words?
Hi, I'm Peyton. Hi, I'm Peyton Brannum. I am nine years old. And I would like to say a speech. Imagine stepping on a Lego, but everywhere. Taken by of a chocolate bar, but it's just not as sweet. And you see it's sugar-free. That's what it's like under the sea. Turtles eating plastic bags thinking they're jellyfish. Or when we step on something at, or when we're playing around at the beach and we step on something unfamiliar. But mom says we're not allowed to know what that is until we're older. And when rumors really do exist because of us, their world's now full of trash. That's why I partnered Ocean Warriors. Where together, we spent eighteen hundred hours annually cleaning up beaches, air parks worldwide. You wouldn't believe the amount of trash we picked up. So next time you're at the beach and the trash can's just so far away, just remember what it's like to step on a Lego. After all, our trash is now a part of their environment. Thank you.
Well Peyton, I always tell young people to pick up trash wherever they're at. Of course, if it's not icky, use a napkin or something like that. Um, but anyway, we really appreciate all of your efforts, so I'm going to give that to you. And you get to get a picture with the city council. You have my good bills all ready. Come on over here.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, I could never do that when I was nine. Um, okay, so now we actually have a sad certificate that we are going to be giving out tonight. Our captain is leaving us. He is going on to bigger and better pastures. But I have to say, he did get a promotion. But, you know, I, I know that our community really appreciates so much, um, our safety and how we have one of the lowest crime rates in our city's history. And so Captain Ken Jones, by the way, we're not related. If you could come on down. Um, I'm going to read this real quick. The San Marcos City Council does hereby present you, Captain Ken Jones, with an honorable certificate of recognition for your twenty-nine-year career with the San Diego County Sheriff's Department. Your work history is a testament to your passionate advocacy for public service and outreach. Therefore, we, the City Council of the City of San Marcos hereby recognize you for your many years of community partnership and service, presented today, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. If you could come over here. Wait. You're not, you, you did get a promotion, didn't you?
Yes.
I thought so.
It's too late. I already, I can't turn it down.
No, I know. No, I think it's, I think it's probably a good promotion. Anyway, I'll give that to you. Um, but would you like to say a few words about how much you liked being in San Marcos?
Absolutely. I'm looking forward to it. Mayor Jones, thank you very much, and I'd like to thank members of council. And I cannot forget our city manager, Jack Griffin, for being a wonderful person to work with. And Assistant City Manager, Michelle Bender, um, thank you for having me as your captain over this last year. Some may know, some don't. I've never worked San Marcos before being selected as, coming here as the, as the station captain, so there were a lot of new faces and relationships to make and personalities were, especially at the station. I have two sitting back there that I've gotten to know very well over the last year. And I can't go without saying that I'm very proud and humbled by the men and women that we have in uniform, patrolling every day, every night. Uh, year in, year out, our relationship with your fire, your fire chief, Dan Barron, was a great working relationship with law enforcement and fire. Made my job very easy. And I, I would be an heir if I didn't say that, uh, over the year, I've gotten to know your other directors and their staff and how fortunate you, as a city, are to have such a wonderful group of people working here for the city. They're passionate, they're very intelligent, they're dedicated, and they really do perform their job well. And, um, I'm leaving with a heavy heart. Um, and it's just, it was, it's been a wonderful experience and I wish I had been here earlier during my career. But thank you very much. We, we, we love the support that the city gives the sheriff's department. And, uh, it's just been a great year. It seems like I was up here a couple of months ago introducing myself as the new captain, and now it's been a year and I'm leaving, so. A lot of relationships that I hope to continue, just to catch up. And, uh, if you need anything from Detention Services Bureau Operations, please reach out and let me know.
I'm hoping I don't personally.
I don't think you will, but if you do, I'm always there. Reach out, I can assist you, and it would be my pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now on to the Smile Award. So, you know, a lot of people don't understand how many amazing people we have in our community. Uh, one of the things that I actually love to talk about is the people in our community and the spirit of service and all of the ways that everyone will time and time again just ca- rise to the occasion and help out one another and volunteer their time and treasure, which, you know, some people, it's money, some people, it's their time, some people, it's both. It really just depends, but we really appreciate everyone that is, um, you know, has, has done anything for the city or the residents in our community. So today, I am going to be recognizing Sonia Olson. Uh, she has quite a history here in the city. And I have to tell you, uh, one of the things that she said to me that I thought was super cool, and I don't, I don't think it's probably here in my notes, is that she told me about her family and how her dad really instilled in her how important, um, it is to give back to your community and to step up and be counted and, you know, answer that call of volunteerism. And I really thought that was really great, so anyway. I wanted to, uh, just say that before I started here. So Sonia and her husband are twenty-year residents of San Marcos. They moved here from Oceanside for the schools. Uh, she is a seventeen-year member of various Discovery, San, El Aho Middle School, um, Discovery, PTO, and San Marcos High School Site Councils. A two-year member of San Marcos Unified School Districts, Dr. Holt's Parent Advisory Council, served on various LCAP committees, served on various PTOs, served as room parent, which is one of the hardest jobs you could have for many classrooms, and served the San Marcos Promise Programs Committee. We were on there together. Um, and is a current parent, a parent of a San Marcos High School freshman. In the community, she was a team parent and manager for many San Marcos youth and school, sports teams. Another very difficult job. Um, steward of a free little library at her home to promote literacy in the neighborhood and, uh, host many book giveaway events and have given away thousands of books. Both the San Marcos Fire Department and Sheriff's Department showed up to her last anniversary event. Neighborhood organizer for many drives, including blanket, food, clothing, books, coffee, et cetera, benefiting San Marcos and local residents. Also needs like Hurricane Katrina and international needs like codes for Armenia. Named the new Paseo del Oro City Park. And her husband and she have owned Sand Dog Solutions, a San, San Marcos small business since two thousand thirteen, ten years. And they are promotional, they are a promotional item business. They have provided spirit wear to many schools and teams in San Marcos Unified and, uh, many San Marcos businesses such as Ace Tutoring, which I saw there here this evening, another San Marcos business, and Nelson Orthodontics, um, also another great San Marcos business. Uh, we have also given many in-kind gifts to San Marcos, not we, sorry, she has, um, to San Marcos nonprofit and student-based groups. So she currently serves on the Advisory Board of Camp Chasm, uh, Chapman University Chapter. And Cap, is it Chesum actually? Chesum, Chesum, is a national nonprofit that serves children impacted by parents' cancer. So I would love to have you come on down Sonia and oh, and she has the best touring section here this evening. Did you want to say a few words?
If I can.
Ah, yes, please.
So I don't have as good memory as my two previous, but so have a favor. So I just want to thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers for this honor. Um, I'm humbled to be recognized in this manner. I'd like to quickly recognize, um, those who have influenced and inspired me. Um, I'm very fortunate to have been, uh, to have grown up surrounded by those that have served. First of all, my maternal grandpa Joe, besides serving our country overseas in World War II, he served the Norwalk, California neighborhood we grew up in in many ways. He was a liaison for local law enforcement and the city. One memory that always makes me smile is when I helped him as a small child in the seventies, sitting with him with the voter rolls. I would dial the phone, hand him the receiver, and he would speak in Spanish about community issues, um, aiming to get more Hispanic citizens involved in the community. After each call, I would use my ruler to cross out the name and move on to the next person. I loved doing this. Thank you, grandpa, for your example in serving others. My father, who is here today, um, for sixty years, my father was very involved in La Habra City in Orange County. This is where he was born and raised. In the eighties, he initiated and implemented a neighborhood revitalized program that gained nationwide recognition. Um, in the eighties, he, um, I'm sorry. He has also worked for twenty years to get a neighborhood park installed in the empty lot next to his home. He succeeded in this effort. I love volunteering, doing cleanup work with him and his neighborhood. He has spent countless hours with local charity events and also has been recognized by his city for his efforts. Thank you, Dad, for showing me the way. I appreciate you. I wish my mom was here. Um, she was the best encourager of all my efforts. But she has passed, but she's always in our hearts. Um, other people that have inspired me is my sister, who fifteen years ago started a program at the elementary school that we grew up in LA County. Um, it was for Spanish-speaking parents to learn basic English so they can communicate with their teachers and staff. Um, it was challenging for her. We didn't grow up speaking Spanish, but, um, she recognized this need. She was awarded the Superintendent Award that year for her effort in doing that program. I'd also thank my cousin as an inspiration, my cousin Manny, who is very involved in children's health charities. He has always, um, supported me in my endeavors here. And I'd like to thank my San Marcos Village of friends and neighbors. I have the best neighborhood and neighbors and friends that are now family, um, who has always supported the causes and have helped out with donations and loans of easy-ups and tables for all the events uh, that I've worked on. Um, it's, San Marcos has been a great place to raise our daughters for the past twenty years. Um, our, yes, from the bottom of my heart, thank you, um, my village, uh, for showing here and, and everything. We truly live in the best city. Um, I want to thank Randy Walton and Mike Sonella for serving our district too well. Um, Randy, I appreciated, um, his support during COVID and discussing and finding solutions for our neighborhood issues. And Mike, we've met and we're off to a great start, and I'm looking forward to improve, I mean, getting to know, getting to have a better, a good relationship with you. Sorry, my ADD is in kicking right now. Um, last but not least, I want to, um, thank my immediate family. Uh, my husband, John, is always at the last minute helping me do this or that to get ready for our events and drives. Um, thank you for putting up with the never-ending present bags of items on our porch for all the donations and drives. Um, your support is invaluable and I couldn't have done this and be here without you. To our daughters, keep up the great work. Maddie, um, has worked with those in the streets without homes, providing medical care to the homeless. Maddie also has worked with Cat and Kesem. Um, I followed in her footsteps. Um, she's a foster dog parent and she does a lot of volunteer efforts. Um, our youngest Sadie has volunteered and enjoyed working with the special needs committee, uh, community and has a knack for working with animals. We are so proud of you. Because of your intuition and compassion for others, it makes my heart sing. I'm very proud of both of you and thank you for continuing the family legacy of service-going. Again, thank you, um, San Marcos, I love you, I love everybody. Hope we stay here for a very long time, forever. Thank you.
So I want to read this real quick. Oh, I'm gonna have to put my granite glasses on, I'm sorry. Okay, so the San Marcos City Council does hereby present you, Sonia Olson, with the Smile Award, San Marcos Inspiration, Leadership, and Excellence Award for Service to the Community. You are being honored for your dedication to improving the San Marcos community through your involvement in many committees and councils, in addition to being a neighborhood drive organization, organizer, and promoting literacy for the community, presented today, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you.
And and I'm going to give you my pin, because I see that you do not have one. So it's our sixtieth anniversary this year, our sixtieth birthday, so I want to give you my pin.
Thank you.
Here's the back.
Oops. I will wear this probably.
Okay. Good, it'll be on for the picture. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, next on our agenda is a presentation by Interfaith Community Services. And our, the CEO, Greg Angelus, here.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be with you. My name's Greg Angel. I serve as the CEO of Interfaith Community Services, and I'm here with our Chief Development Officer, Verinda Missit. Um, thank you for inviting us this evening to share a little bit about our work, uh, here in San Marcos and our partnership throughout North San Diego County. Interfaith Community Services, uh, was started more than forty years ago, right here, uh, in North County, uh, bringing together congregations here in San Marcos and throughout to, uh, help our neighbors in need through comprehensive programs in partnership with, uh, diverse faith communities and people of compassion. Interfaith now operates more than seventy-five programs and services, uh, here in San Marcos and, uh, throughout our communities. Our services are organized in, uh, a few different areas, which you can see on the screen here. You won't be tested, you won't be, uh, required to memorize all this, that's our job. But you can know and the community can know and have faith that, uh, we're very fortunate to be able to work in partnership with thousands of volunteers, hundreds of professionals who are, uh, employed and work at Interfaith Community Services, hundreds of faith communities to help thousands of our neighbors in need, uh, with a number of, uh, services. Here in San Marcos, your recent support, um, has been critical. Um, you have funded through Interfaith Community Services, a partnership to prevent homelessness for, uh, one hundred and forty-nine adults, one hundred and twenty children. These are families impacted, uh, by COVID negatively in one way, shape, or form. Um, and everything we do is in partnership, so Interfaith Community Services doesn't operate or own any brick and mortar locations here in San Marcos. So our teams have been located at True Care locations, um, and at other community locations, helping these families. We've, with your investment, uh, distributed more than four hundred thousand dollars in support to local San Marcos families, not just to prevent homelessness, but to also keep them housed and to provide ongoing case management and support. In addition to what's pictured on screen, uh, we've also been working with older San Marcos residents, and we've helped a hundred and seventeen additional individuals either overcome homelessness or again, prevent them from becoming homeless. To share a little bit about other partnerships that we have here in San Marcos, I will turn it over, uh, to Verinda, a San Marcos native and a member of our San Marcos, uh, Chamber Board of Directors, Verinda.
Thank you. Yes, I have deep roots in San Marcos. I am a graduate of San Marcos High School in Palomar. My parents both taught at Palomar College and my brother just retired from the San Marcos School District after thirty-five years. So, um, I'm standing here where my mom actually gave the invocation many times. So I'm very proud to be here. I want to talk about our supportive services at Interfaith today. Um, supportive inner, supportive services at Interfaith is really the heart of what we're doing. It is, um, it is emergency food service, it is, um, helping to prevent homelessness. It is the senior server, services that Greg talked about, legal aid and case management. So we do a hot breakfast every morning. Um, we make sure that everybody who's hungry can, can eat. And we also give out three hundred sack lunches every single day, so it's over two thousand sack lunches, um, a week at Interfaith. We also have shower and laundry facilities. So, um, that is really crucial to the community and we're really, um, always happy to have so many volunteers helping us. In addition to being the Chief Development Officer at Interfaith, I'm also, as Greg said, on the, on the Board of Directors for the Chamber. And I chair the Community Committee. And the Community Committee is comprised of nonprofits and local businesses in San Marcos, and we Marcos, and we are creating volunteer opportunities and other business projects around the community so that we can all work together, help social impact, and also creates a lot more of the togetherness that we all need right now. So one of our first projects is gonna be at the Boys and Girls Club, where we're gonna be doing a food distribution Easter week. We plan on giving away more than 200 boxes of food. And so those are the kind of things you can expect in addition to volunteer opportunities and other things we can create in that committee, in that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Verinda. Interfaith Community Services is fortunate to do a lot of work helping people overcome homelessness and move into housing. We do that here in San Marcos, we do that throughout the community. Last year, through Interfaith, your partnership helped actually 1,809 individuals overcome homelessness. We also provide a full spectrum of behavioral health services, especially bridging people to behavioral health services when they don't have any accessable themselves. We operate the complete spectrum of addiction treatment programs, including detox, residential treatment, outpatient treatment services, and sober living, helping this last year nearly 500 individuals with those services. We focus on economic improvement and improving income for individuals, for students graduating through our Transitional Youth Academy, for veterans, who we provide job training and support to, to all of the individuals, including the families who I mentioned. We provided homeless prevention and case management support through your investment this last year. We are continuously looking at new ways to innovate systems of care and to bring forward resources. So I'm gonna close tonight by sharing about two new resources that we'll be opening. But before I do, I just want to share that because of all of these different resources that we're able to offer, we've been able, in the last three months, to work with community partners to plan for another emerging need that is coming. Many of you may have heard that around the Christmas holiday, there were busloads of asylum-secreting migrants who were dropped at transit centers in North County when local shelter systems overflowed and there were not resources for them. There were remarkable community members, grassroots community members, who came forward and provided critical services. Interfaith is now working with our North County cities, with our local congressional delegation, with those grassroots members, with other service providers, to plan for future instances where people may be on our streets and may be in need of basic humanitarian assistance. It's an example of an emerging need we're able to garner resources and marshal help for because of the breadth and depth of services that we're able to offer. The last two emerging programs to share about tonight, in Escondido, we've purchased an old, what used to be, didn't look like this, an old beat-up motel that has been completely rebuilt and will be a recuperative care center for veterans and individuals experiencing homelessness, being discharged out of local hospitals. We'll be working closely with Kaiser, with Tri-City Medical Center, with Palomar, with the VA on this project. When that opens, the facility where that program currently operates will turn into a family shelter, a shelter for families with children experiencing homelessness. Through the Alliance for Regional Solutions, the city of San Marcos supports a regional bridge to housing shelter network. This new family shelter will be added to that network this next year. So your support, which has already supported and supports a men's shelter operated by Catholic Charities in Carlsbad, a family and women's shelter operated by Operation Hope North County in Vista, and Interfaith's Haven House Adult Shelter in Escondido, this next year will support a brick-and-mortar family shelter. That this last year, operating out of pop-up temporary locations, helped 126 children overcome homelessness. So we're very pleased and honored, and I appreciate very much your time, being able to share this evening. We're here to answer any questions, address any thing that you'd like us to speak to, but most of all, happy to share about the wonderful outcomes of our partnership and appreciative of your investment in these proven effective resources. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Greg. And I was just going to mention, if the council members have not come to visit, you really should go check out what they're doing. It's quite remarkable. It's all kind of within a couple of, well, like a block, I guess, of one another, but they're really doing a lot of great things. And the recuperative care, it's amazing. Yes, it doesn't look like it used to look.
And I forgot one thing, Mayor, if I could add.
Yeah.
I like buried the headline here. We've secured, through our healthcare partners, contributions to purchase a mobile Interfaith on wheels.
Yay.
And so this will be coming forward this year so that we can bring even more of the services that we're talking about here in San Marcos. So we're excited for that.
That's great.
Thank you.
And then the food drive, when you get that, I'll schedule the date and everything. Could you please make sure that we all know when that is?
Absolutely.
Great, awesome. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Gregor, are you still partnering with Cal State on the Leadership North County for the tours?
We are, absolutely.
That was my first experience with your operation. Very educational, thank you.
Yeah, it's a wonderful program, and we're also partnering with Cal State San Marcos to launch a new scholarship program so that our bachelor's educated case managers can receive scholarship support to become mental health clinicians, as well as addiction treatment specialists.
Excellent, field studies.
You got it.
Awesome. Any other questions or comments? No, thank you very much. Appreciate the update.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members.
Okay, moving on to our consent calendar, we actually have a few speakers on item number seven, so I will be pulling that. So any other questions or anyone like to pull any other items? No? Do I have a motion to approve the balance?
I'll move to approve the balance.
Second? Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, any noes? No? Okay, item number seven, there are a few folks that would like to speak. Do we have a short presentation or maybe just some discussion about what it is exactly that we're doing here this evening?
Sure, Madam Mayor, Council, I'll take care of that for you. This is essentially step two in the process of whether the residents of this particular neighborhood will eventually vote to annex into the Landscape and Lighting Act district. You took the first step on February 28th, authorizing the initiating of proceedings. That was following, I won't get into all the history of it, but that was following more than a year of conversations between city staff and residents of this particular neighborhood who were never entered into the landscaping district when the properties were developed back in the 1990s, I believe, for reasons that aren't all that clear. The developer of that had been maintaining these facilities for decades, and I think it was in late 2020, they said, you know, we're not gonna do that anymore. And so that's when the conversation started about, okay, how do we, how do we handle that? So the city staff's been working, like I said, had multiple meetings with the residents over the course of more than a year to go through what the process would be, what, and eventually get to the point, what the cost would be, for the city to pick this up and maintain it like it does many, many other areas similarly in the city. And the process by which we do that is through annexing to a tax district, like the vast majority of new developments have since 1981, when the LMD was actually created. And so we're at that point now where with this action, you would be setting the date for which we would have the hearing and how the election could actually occur. It'll be up to the residents themselves, whether or not to vote yes or no to do this. A yes vote means they'd be agreeing to tax themselves roughly $416 or $417 a year for the city, come and do the normal maintenance it always does in a variety of locations. If the residents vote no, that's okay too, because it's gonna be, you know, the council's not making this decision for them. That would then mean that the city's level of maintenance would be at essentially a de minimis or really low level compared to other areas of the city. So that's, that sort of is the question that's before us, and the council's, you know, pretty well aware of the issue. So you know, take the comments and then see what sort of other information I can provide at that point.
Okay, so what I would like to do is just listen to our speakers, and then if you have any questions of staff or the speakers, you could just jump right in and let me know. Okay, first off will be Donna Fritcher, followed by Suzie, Susan Monroe, it says Susan, but I know you as Suzie, and then John Melson. Okay, Donna.
Thank you for all that you do for our city and for giving us the time to speak to you tonight. My name is Donna Fritcher. My husband and I are original homeowners to Discovery Meadows. We are proud of our city and have great memories of the 24 years that we have spent here with our now two college kids. I come to you tonight to respectfully ask that you delay the vote regarding Discovery Meadows landscaping until we can fully understand the complete proposal. I have attended both meetings and believe that there are several issues that need clarification before an educated vote can be made. The majority of questions and concerns that have been presented have gone unanswered, and instead, we have been diverted to view the engineering plan. This plan was just made available to us, which still seems to have some confusing and questionable areas. While I believe many of the Discovery Meadows residents are in favor of improvements, the differing proposals that we have been shown have left many of us confused and concerned. I ask that you provide a reasonable amount of time before we vote so we can all evaluate the details and then fairly vote, knowing we have all of the detailed information as well as all of our questions answered. Thank you again for your patience and your consideration.
Donna? I have a quick question of staff. Jack, I guess that would be you. Do we have a final vote date or that the residents would be voting?
Yeah, the schedule would be, we would mail, assuming the council acts this evening on this item, in the affirmative, ballots would be mailed out on March 25th, voting would be due on May 9th. They could either be mailed in or brought to the city council meeting that evening, and then the election results would be announced by the council on May 23rd.
Okay, so May 9th is when the votes will actually be due back.
Yep.
So I guess my question would be, between now and May 9th, would we be conducting any sort of meetings, answering questions with the residents?
We would not, we do not have any plans to have any additional meetings. We'd certainly answer any questions that any residents, once they got the ballot. If they got any questions related to that, we would be happy to answer those. We plan on putting some information in the ballot. We don't want to sell the vote, because it's really up to the residents to decide to do this. It's not our, it's not our, in our place to advocate one way or the other.
Right.
In that regard, but we try to put some basic factual information. The engineer's report, it's part of the agenda packet tonight, it's fairly clear, these are, these documents are done in accordance with the state law, they have to be done a certain way, but it breaks down the costs pretty clearly as to what the roughly $60,000 of additional maintenance costs the city would incur by taking on this additional effort, which is the basis of the $417 per year of additional tax. So folks can see what those numbers are, how those numbers are generated. Like I said, we do this in many places, and so we have a pretty good handle on what these things cost us, based on our contracts and all the other work we do throughout the city.
But we would be able to answer the questions in this timeframe?
Absolutely. I would encourage anybody who gets a ballot and has a question, to ask the question before they vote.
Okay, perfect. All right.
Quick question. Jack, maybe I missed it. Is this a majority of the property owners or a majority of those voting to move this forward?
I'll defer to the city attorney on how the...
It's my understanding it's a majority of the ballots that are cast, so.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
I have one clarifying question. The documents that are relevant to, or that the residents may want to see, where are they available for the residents to view?
The engineer's report is in tonight's packet, and so it's available on the city's website, and we would certainly be willing to send it out to anybody who asks for it.
Could we also make sure in the ballot that we have the website where, you know, the link? Yes, exactly, the link, and that, all the information and who to contact if they have any questions?
We can do that.
Okay, all right, Mike, and then you share.
Just to follow up. Yeah, just to follow up on Council Member Musgrove's question. So I've been part of HOA votes before where a quorum was required. Is that not necessary in this case? A quorum of the voters?
The voters will each be mailed a packet, it goes to the parcel, so.
But you don't have, there's no threshold of participation? That needs to be hit, like more than half of the?
You know, I don't represent the district, so I don't know the answer offhand. Maybe Darren, do you know?
Sorry, Darren, could I get you to come on down to the...
It's simply a majority, it's the, it's the majority of the votes cast.
Yeah, that's, that was my understanding.
There's not, there's not, it is not an HOA. There is no HOA in this neighborhood.
No, I understand, I just, that was an example of an experience I've had that's similar. Looking at the engineering, the engineer's report, you know, I'm obviously new, and so I'm not really privy to what's been presented to the neighborhood before, but there's not like, there's not a lot of pictures, and there's not, it's a lot of kind of dry information. It seems to me that, at least this report, during the meetings that the city's had with the neighborhood, has there been, you know, some posters or just kind of some conceptual drawings of what maybe the landscaping's gonna look like or any of that stuff?
I don't want to say yes or no to that. I think that there's been general discussion about that the city will maintain this in a manner similar to how it maintains other areas with plant materials that it's commonly uses that are, tend to be drought tolerant. We would attempt to put the totlot pieces of this into the program of playground replacement that we do throughout the years. We don't do plans for those because those change as time goes on. So I don't think there's a lot of detail. This is a maintenance, it's not a capital program. This is more of a maintenance effort to make sure that litter's picked up, water and sewer handled, electricity's handled, landscape maintenance, slope maintenance. So I don't think there's a whole lot of, with the exception of maybe the totlots, I don't think there's a lot of design element to these kinds of things.
Yeah, that makes sense. But it seems that over the years, if you just look across the street on the Discovery Hillside, you know, where it has been maintained, there may be at least an initial kind of bringing it up to par. Is there any of that planned?
Well, so keeping in mind that the folks across the street have been paying in since they developed.
I totally understand.
So the city would, would maintain the areas along the right-of-way, so that would, that would improve, I would assume. We would, we would attempt to bring that up to be normal to city standards, that's, you know, common in that area and throughout. One of the issues in this particular area has been the question of the wall. We've been very clear that we will not be maintaining the wall. The wall is owned by the residents who own the wall that's on their parcel. It would certainly behoove, I think, the residents of the neighborhood to think about an HOA, to try to deal with some of those more common things that generally are not maintained by the city or other cities that do these kinds of things. So, but to answer your question is, yeah, I mean, I think that we would get in there and do, folks would see a higher level of maintenance quickly, we wouldn't wait for the money to come in. We would get in there and do, try to bring it up and make it very consistent with what's around it, and then maintain it in the same way going forward.
Yeah, thanks, Jack. I appreciate you taking time to kind of explain that process for me and anybody that might be watching. I think they're gonna have to make a decision, right, is what's their return on their investment, right? What do they get for their money?
That's right.
And so I think if we can just, you know, maybe share information on that, that might help them make their decision one way or the other.
Sure.
And just to be clear, Jack, on Discovery Creek and Glen Arbor, not Woodwind, because I think that has an HOA, but on the non-HOA, we don't maintain the walls on any of that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, just wanted to be clear on that. Did you have another question, Council Member?
Probably for Helen, but she may defer. We'll be sending these out to the listed addresses, correct? Without consideration for a property owner who's offside and renting the parcel? It would then go to whoever happens to be renting?
It'd go to the registered owner or the parcel?
It goes to the parcel owner, not to the resident. Because if there's a renter, if the parcel owner is the voter.
Okay, so we have a record of the particular person?
Yeah, we pull those addresses as best we can off the tax rolls if they're not the one.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Okay, sorry, now back to you, Suzie, and then followed by John Melson.
I'll put on glasses, even though I wrote everything very large.
It's all right, you can wear granite glasses too.
Is it possible for me to have a meeting with Jack at another time, because some of the things that were put forward are not something that we were ever discussed with?
If you, if you can shoot off an email, if you send one to me, I'll make sure that he gets it.
Okay, great.
Yeah, if you don't have his email.
Okay. Good evening, city council members and our distinguished mayor. My name is Susan Monroe. I am speaking tonight to ask for an extension of the voting ballot dates for the Discovery Meadows Special Tax Assessment to be sent out after the residents have had an opportunity to review the engineering report that was just released today and submit possible ideas and changes. The current date of March 25th was set by the city for the Discovery Meadows Special Assessment tax ballot mailing with no input from the homeowners. We have asked questions and been told a bit of, I don't know, and we will get back with you. I actually had a call in, an email in, and was told to Tim, who is working on the project, and again, we will get back with you later. We feel as if they are... We feel as if they are moving forward and we do not have a choice on what happens to our neighborhood. I would like to start with one. I do not have an opposition to this yearly tax imposed on all 143 homeowners of the Discovery Meadows neighborhood to cover maintenance fees for our common areas. But I do have a problem with the city employees not informing the residents of the specifics and where money will be spent and what maintenance will actually be done. They have not fully informed us of the exact layout of the common areas. These change with every meeting. Open space, calling them totlots, which will have a significant yearly cost. And per the track maps of that area, it does say open space and not totlot. And entry monuments. Two, my next concern is a city proposal, more than likely already on the ballot, is it does not address the common exterior stucco wall that surrounds the neighborhood and unifies this area. We have been told that the maintenance and upkeep of this wall, which could have significant cracking from the blasting of the building of new homes directly to the north, is 100% the individual homeowner's responsibility for any upkeep and damage. I personally have 258 feet of wall on my property line. When I purchased my home in November of 1998, I was told by the developer, Presley Homes and then William Lyon Homes, that I would maintain the interior stucco and the city would maintain the exterior. I have repainted, I have repaired and painted my interior wall twice in the last 23 years. This issue I would like changed to reflect what the county record in the Cessers paperwork, which I can bring to you when I meet with you, of maintenance responsibilities with Discovery Meadows Track 393 dated on April 18th of 97. I've asked for a survey to mark the actual property lines of each section that abuts these individual property owners to determine who is responsible. At present, there have been two meetings with the residents. The first one was informal and set up on the Fox Hall Court with a general idea of what will be implemented. Last Tuesday, March 7th, I, which was the first time I heard anything about this, there was another informal meeting here at the public conference room in the city building. The second meeting had different information from the first and a yearly cost per homeowner of $417. When we asked for a breakdown, we were told to wait for the engineering report and then it would make sense. Today I received the report. In review, the ballots are proposed to be sent out on the 25th of March, which to us as homeowners means we have no input or ability to change what city employees have decided we need. We feel this is not enough time to ask for updates and changes and additional residential input as to what will be covered in our yearly maintenance fees. Thank you.
Hey, I have a question for you. So you mentioned that the developer told you that the wall, the interior was your responsibility and the exterior is whose responsibility?
The city's responsibility.
Okay.
And...
Do you have that in writing?
I do. I actually have the county report signed with Discovery Meadows on the bottom of it.
Okay, so if you could make sure that you, do you have a copy that you could leave this evening?
I do not have a copy, but I can bring you one back.
Okay, all right. If you could make sure that we get a copy of that, that would be great.
Okay.
And then, Jack, a quick question. That's all I have of you. Thank you, Suzy. Jack, I do have a question. As far as the questions that we have received to date before this evening, do we have those all in and categorized and whatnot?
No, because there have been so many conversations, informal, informal, email, on the phone. I mean, we've been doing this since early 2021. So to say that there's a long laundry list of all of the questions and things that have come up would be inaccurate.
Do we have a shot clock timeframe that we have to after our, our action this evening? That we have to have something done by a certain date? We have to have the ballots put out or do we have that?
If you change this date, then we'll have to change all of the other dates.
All the other dates.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess my question would be, if we have not received back all of the questions, I mean, all of the answers that we've received this far in writing, if we don't get those out by the time that we want to mail this on the 25th, do you think we can?
I think the challenge, I'll be just as blunt as I can be, the challenge with respect to this is the questions come in on an individual basis. Part of the reason is because there's not an HOA that can kind of coordinate a response or a list of questions to the city. And so we respond to questions when we get them. She indicated that she had sent an email. That came in late yesterday afternoon. I've got it right here. We're working on answers. And so we'll get back to her with all those answers. We want to make sure we give factual answers to the, I don't know, there were 20 or so questions as part of that email. So we've been as responsive as we can be on an individual basis when they come in, so...
So the 25th...
It would have been helpful, it would have been much better if there was an organized, organized on the other side of this. I don't mean to say we're adversarial, just on the other side of this communication piece that was sort of coalescing things and so...
I've been on the other side. I know, I know how difficult it can be. So I guess my question would be, and I know we've done this in the past for responses, if we set up a site on the website, here's a question, here's the answer, and we just put all of the questions and answers thus far, we could put that up on a site? Can we do something like that? So then if someone could say, oh, I go to this website, but when they get their ballot and they go, oh, they look through and they go, there's my question and it's already answered. Is it possible to do something? And here's, I'm not trying to delay this because I know we want to get the maintenance happening so that, you know, it looks better and it's better for the community. However, on the other hand, I also want to make sure that we're answering all the questions and what's the best way to do that? And I think having the date of May, what, I'm sorry, what was the date again? May?
Uh, May 9th.
May 9th of having the final, that's a good amount of time. But I just want to make sure that we're going to be able to respond in a timely manner. It's not going to be like May 7th that we have all the answers. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I understand where you're going and I'm not, I don't want to say it's not possible to do something like that. But I also don't want to create confusion with a bunch of intermittent pieces of information coming out, right? If someone sends me in five questions next Thursday and then someone sends in five questions two Tuesdays later, but someone looks at it in between, they're not going to go back, you know what I mean? I'm just trying to think about, I'm trying to figure out a coherent way to, to address that that would not make the views of some of the folks, you know, more confused.
Could you treat it like an RFI and have a date period for questions to be submitted? And then after that date, then the city would answer all the questions and then put it on a website where everybody could access it?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I think we could do something like that. But I think if someone chooses not to do that, would we not answer their question? I mean, I think we would anyway because that's who we are. We don't try, we don't tend to say, no, you can't get an answer to that because it came in late. It's not how we, but I think that's a good way to do it.
Well, maybe we just, so maybe we just say, okay, between everything that we've already received, we have until Friday because we've already received a lot of questions that they, you know, because we just...
I mean, Darren's probably going to be mad at me for saying this, but I think that the, the solution to this is that we have one more community meeting. If the council moves this forward this evening, we'll pick a date early in April and have one more community meeting. And that'll be the opportunity to, if you've still got questions that we haven't answered via the emails and texts that come in. And that's the best, I think that's the better way to do it than
Yeah.
sort of feeding it out intermittently. I think that would be a...
Totally agree. I, I like that idea, so.
I think that's a, I think that would be the solution. We would pick a date and folks can come and, and if they've still got questions. I mean, in the end, higher levels of maintenance will increase these numbers. These are the levels of maintenance that the city does. Whether we'd be willing to do a higher level of maintenance is something that we'd have to think about.
Well, that would also require a modification of the engineer's report, so you'd have to start all over.
Delay things. We think it's quite clear the wall's not the city's responsibility.
But if there's information out there that proves that that's, that's different, then...
We have information that specifically says the homeowners are responsible for that.
Okay.
So...
Okay, so...
I think that's a better solution is for us to send the ballots out. If you approve this this evening, have a meeting in early April. That way people have a month then to digest what their answers were before they vote.
They get to vote and then it comes back to us the end of May?
So they would submit the...
No, the, the...
You don't get to approve or not approve the vote?
Right.
You just, you just, you just give the tabulation of the vote. It's not a subjective decision on your part. It's just that votes come in by May 9th and on May 23rd, you would announce the results of that election and it's yes or no at that point.
Got it. Okay.
I believe there isn't another public comment?
Yeah, there is. Sorry, yes. I have it here, Mrs. Peak. It's John Melson. So, okay, all right. Okay, John Melson, you can come up and speak. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's John Melson. I'm a resident of Discovery Meadows. My wife and son and I moved here in 2008 and we're very fond of the neighborhood. About 16 months ago, it would be December 2021, I contacted the city of San Marcos as I read about a planned tax to be placed on the homeowners of Discovery Meadows for landscaping. I attended this workshop where a plan for landscaping was discussed. About a year went by before there was any additional discussion of the landscaping plan. As you know, it can be quite a challenge to get information out to all the homeowners. I was contacted by city personnel. Tess Sangster and Darren contacted me in order to help spread the word of the possibility of a tax increase for the neighborhood. I'm happy to help spread the word, but I admit I was a little surprised. We worked together via emails and Zoom meetings to come up with a plan that would attempt to educate and notify the homeowners. This included a card mailing, Facebook group posts and a meeting on the streets of our neighborhood. We also had a meeting one week ago in this building, right over there, where additional information was presented. At this meeting just last week, we discovered that a significant portion of the previously discussed landscaping was removed from the plan. We had initially been shown diagrams that showed that the area all along Craven and Echo Lane would be improved. When we saw at the end of the day that that had been pulled back, that was being considered common area. And so that the only areas that were going to be landscaped through this tax were five areas, the north slope, the two small monument areas and two totlots. This discovery was a big surprise to many of us because that change wasn't even mentioned until well after the discussion was expected to be over. We happened to ask an important question and only then was the reduced plan landscaping discussed. The soon-to-be-released engineering report will have the up-to-date information and it does show that. The landscaping plan will be voted on by the Discovery Meadows homeowners. These ballots, as we've all just discussed, would be mailed on the 25th in about 11 days. The neighborhood will not get an opportunity to view the engineering report, a document Darren did reference many times as being the source document before. And we were told last week that it may not be made publicly available till the 16th, till Friday, but maybe it's today, maybe it goes up on the website today. This would mean that the homeowners would have less than 10 days to review the engineering report, comprehend it, get some feedback and then educate the other homeowners or others so that they can make their own educated decision. So we're looking for an extension. It's possible that the homeowners may be voting before they get all the information. The ballot goes out, it's possible someone could get a ballot in two weeks before our, our April timeframe and send it in before they knew all the information, before they were properly educated. One primary reason for requesting an extension is some of the mailboxes in the neighborhood were recently vandalized in two separate areas of the neighborhood. And several residents must go to the Twin Oaks post office to get the mail. Mail's not being delivered to them. They have to go there to get it. So there's a little potential problem on getting information. We feel that the city should delay the vote for a short period of time, a couple of months, so that the homeowners can review the engineering report, make an educated decision. Perhaps we can discuss options concerning the totlots in order to reduce the project and thereby reduce the tax. We wanted to keep everything open. If there's going to be a landscaping done in our neighborhood, we'd like to know a few more details instead of just saying that landscaping will be taken care of and don't worry about it. The proposed tax would exist in perpetuity, starting at $417 a year and forever increasing 2% to 5% each year. In 20 years, this could be more than $800. Homeowners need to know the facts from the engineering report and have time for any clarifications or potential modifications from city officials before casting a ballot for a long-lasting tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam, I'd like to address one of those comments, the initial comment.
Could I have a question?
The removal of Craven and Echo was to the benefit of the residents. We're going to do that work and not charge them for that.
Okay, well, and that's what I was going to say. Is it common area? Is it not common area? So it's actually in our landscaping lighting district already? So we're already maintaining it and paying for it?
We would pick up the maintenance of those portions and not make it part of this district's cost charges.
Gotcha, okay. All right. And then for clarification, the ballots are mailed out on the 25th. In that, in that ballot, would it also have a thing in there that says there's going to be a meeting for the community to get more information? Here's the website that you can find the current information that's answering all the questions? Would it also talk about the new meeting that we would, the public meeting?
We would, well, obviously we would put in there that there's a meeting coming and that would take time and place.
Okay, all right. So we will have that date like finalized in the next few days, maybe? And will, and can we respond to all of the folks that we've already received emails?
We'll have a date of you vote on the affirmative tonight.
Yes, no, I'm, I'm saying if, yes, of course, yeah, okay.
Yes, we'll work on that date.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Yes, councilmembers.
I mean, that timeline for a new meeting and answering all these questions and some sort of way that we can get the, the information out to as many people as possible, that seems tight to me, given the March 25th goal of sending out the ballots. I know that we would have to move timelines, you know, but what's the rush? Because, and here's my concern is, and it's up to the neighbors, the neighborhood, if they want to go ahead and vote for this or not. But I don't, if they don't have the information, if they're don't, if they're going to receive this ballot and it's going to say, do you want to pay $417 a year, they're going to probably say no. Right? Unless they have information to show that they're going to get something in return for that. And they're very clear on what that looks like. And, and so we might find ourselves, if we, if we rush this, we might find ourselves where it fails for a lack of information. And, and then where are we at and how do, how do we maintain that part of, of our community? Or do we just let it go forever? And is that good for anybody? And so I, I'd almost want to, you know, take a little bit more time and get the information out. And not that we're going to go out and promote that this passes, but at least make sure that everybody who gets a ballot will have an opportunity to, to make an informed decision.
I think this was asked already once, Jack, but is there a legal requirement to meet certain deadlines other than pushing back the entire process? Or is this, I agree, we can see that this was the timeline that was established going back to 2021.
Like I said, we've been working on this for quite a long time. Significant staff resources have been spent. If you, if the council wants to move this date of this action forward into the future, it just moves everything forward into the future. I don't think that there's any requirement, how, I mean, from two weeks ago's initiation, I don't think we were required within two weeks to do it. It's how we've always done it, which is a bad government answer, but it's how we've always done it. We, we have these annexation items on the ballots. This one's a little different, obviously, than a new development one. But this is the standard process by which we move forward on these kinds of district votes. I think if the council doesn't want to move this forward this evening, it just moves us out farther into the future. I don't anticipate we will change the engineer's report in any way.
Okay, so I have a question of Mrs. Peak. If we were to add 30 days to each different trigger, each different thing that we're doing to have the, well, we would still want to, I think, have the public meeting as soon as possible to get the information out there. But if we moved the March 25th date, 30 days, and then the subsequent dates when the, when the votes had to be back, would we be able to do that this evening?
It's probably best to simply move the, this, this hearing date and then have staff assign and district council assign the dates for the remaining tasks that would have to be accomplished. So if you, the vote is to delay the vote, you know, to delay the proceeding, then I would suggest that you... then I would suggest that you simply do that, and then the associated timeframes would be then appropriately rescheduled by staff and by district council.
So, what would the legislative action be? Would it be to actually table it, or would it be to vote to?
If you're talking about 30 days, it would be to continue it to a date certain and then direct staff to.
But then, we would have to see it on that day if we do delay it from this evening. We would have to see it on a specific day. Is it like a specific time? We've had a couple of times like that where it had to be.
No, you would simply adjourn it to whatever meeting is a month hence, approximately a month hence.
Okay. So, it could be our first meeting in April. Okay. So, I guess my motion would be to table it. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Oh, and then, sorry, one other question. Would we still be able to have the workshop in the interim?
Of course. You could have done that now with the hearing as it is set. So, if you continue it, you most certainly can have another meeting. But, you know, the, that anticipates that everything will remain, as noted in the engineer's report, which is relatively specific with respect to the improvements in landscaping that will be maintained, will be, will remain as is.
I know. Yeah.
So, if that changes, then those dates are going to be off.
Okay. All right. Got you. Yes, Deputy Bear.
A couple of questions, Jack. What I'm understanding is basically we would be maintaining the existing five areas and to their existing amenities, except when they need to be updated at some point in time. And we're not creating any new amenities. We're maintaining what's there.
That's correct.
Okay. And if the residents decide not to vote for this, then who maintains that?
That's a fair, that's a good question.
Because the builder says no.
The builder's gone.
Okay.
The developer's gone. They've been gone for a while. We would do a, what I would say is a diminutism, diminutous amount of maintenance to the facilities that we would be responsible for. And it would not look like as nice as other areas that the city maintains, unless the residents themselves banded together and took care of that.
Okay. And then, if they wanted to do more, then.
Say this in a more theoretical way rather than this neighborhood. The city has to agree to what its level of maintenance is going to be. So, I mean, a group of residents, regardless of where they're at, can come and say, "Hey, we want you to do X, Y, and Z." And we may say, "Well, no, we're not willing to do Z." So, if that was the nature of the conversation, that could very well happen. I think in this case, if it was, "We want you to maintain the wall," our answer is, at least at the staff level, our answer would be no. Council can make a different decision. But people can't compel us to maintain what they want us to maintain beyond what the public typically maintains. And they certainly can't compel us to spend more than what it actually costs to maintain. The city has a long history of making development pay for its own costs. We have CFDs throughout the city. Almost everybody who's bought a house in San Marcos since 1981 has, is paying into some kind of a tax assessment district. Yeah, and then changed over the years. These residents do pay. They paid $26, I think it is, for the electricity. But that's the only thing they've been paying since that point in time. This is a quirk of something that happened back then, and we're not blaming any of the residents for that. Trying to solve a problem that probably shouldn't have occurred but did. But we're not going to take on more maintenance than what we would take on typically in any other development.
Right. I understand.
Like a pickleball court or something like that.
So, then. If they wanted a different approach to the whole situation, they could form their own HOA. I'm just saying, if they really, I don't know what they want, but if they wanted something way beyond, because we have to treat all neighborhoods the same, then they could form an HOA.
I mean, they absolutely could. Even if they vote for this, they could, if they wanted to pick up some of the other pieces. If they don't vote for this, they can. They can do that at their discretion anytime they want.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right. I'm going to ask a crazy question. There's a piece of land, the Pocket Parks. I'm very familiar with that neighborhood. Who owns that land?
So, the tot lots were required as a condition of approval of the development.
Right.
So, the city has some responsibility for that. So, we would do some level of maintenance on that. Having said that, unlike other areas that would be contributing to future capital improvements, turnovers of the equipment and things like that, we would try to maintain what's there as best as we can in its current condition. Without this, we would not guarantee any improvements. This is a guarantee of some level of improvement.
So, the land, so let's say the sprinklers break. We're going to have to maintain it if there's this.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of gray areas in this if this doesn't pass. About, we're saying we're responsible for this and we're not responsible for that. There's going to be the potential for a lot of those kinds of conversations going forward.
Okay. So, I would like to make the motion. Everyone, I would like to make the motion to, yes.
So, it effectively becomes a consortium of private properties for the majority of the responsibilities, with the exception of the $26 obligation for electricity. So, as you said before, other than the tot lots, if something unforeseeable happens on that property, it's not the city that's going to come in and affect the repairs. It will be up to the owners to decide how they want to do that.
Yeah, and I think there's going to be some cases where that's true, and there's going to be some cases where we might say, "Yeah, okay, we're on the hook for that." But I think there's going to be a lot of those kinds of conversations about, well, where is it? And whose responsibility is it? Whereas, I think this cleans up a lot of that and gets it to a place where it should have been when it was developed back in 1990, whatever.
And these are, these are dedicated roads, public roads?
Yes, they're city streets.
Do we know if there are any stop signs, limit lines, crosswalks?
Those would not be part of this. This is a landscape district. So, those are covered by normal street, city. Street maintenance is not part of this.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, my motion would be that we come back, first meeting in April, which is April 11th, that at that point in time, that we do what we were supposed to be doing tonight. In the interim, that we would have the workshop, the public workshop, for everyone to come and get all of your questions. But we're also going to answer the questions that we've already received the emails from. And then, and then at that point in time, we would take this step. And Helen, just to be clear, the previous step that we took, this is number two of three, correct? We don't have to go back to number one, correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. All right. So.
Again, I don't represent the district, but that is my understanding.
So, if we need to come back, we will start with step number one, whatever. We'll do the right thing if we have to. But my motion would be that we come back April 11th. In the interim, we have a public workshop.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other clarifying wording on that, Helen?
No, I think that's pretty much covers it.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Any noes? Seeing none. Okay. Motion passes to come back on April 11th. Okay. Oral communications. I do not think I have any more speaker slips. Sandag reports, reports. You were there, Edward. I was out sick. You all know from home, I have a very weird voice right now. I'm not sick anymore. I feel great. But I was very sick last week. So, Edward got to go to the Sandag retreat.
And it was held at the VA House Conference Center, March 9th and 10th. It was pretty informative, especially for the new Sandag board members. They provided informational discussions and exercises to promote collaborative discussion and problem solving. So, some tabletop exercises and, you know, scenarios really designed to get people talking where some of the Sandag meetings could be a little bit contentious. So, they organized the groups. So, people that you might not otherwise have a conversation with, you're sitting across the table from them. It was a lot of fun. They talked about how Sandag Forum developed over the years as the state assigned more duties, responsibilities, and obligations as a regional governance. We did talk about some of the priority projects, the Los An Corridor, for those that don't know, is in Los Angeles. San Luis Obispo, correct? San Diego Corridor. Specifically, the Del Mar Bluff stabilization and Ultimot rail relocation. A tunnel project and central mobility hub allowing airport access from downtown. And the Oti Mesa East, a third border crossing. They want to improve the current trolley system, better use of existing freeway systems, more upgrades to State Route 52 that runs between Highway 67 and Interstate 15. And then presumably, they would also look at points west of there, Alto La Jolla. The State Route 78 I-5 interchange and managed lanes throughout the highway system. And before the mayor asked, they did not go into detail about what a managed lane was.
As in repurposing the lanes?
That was not discussed.
Well, that's what it is. Okay.
Some of the critical decisions for the board this calendar year is approving a budget that includes the youth opportunity passes, and they're moving it from under 18 to under 24 and the estimated cost of that. And when they, when they talk about costs, it's the estimated reduction in revenues of $20 million, and that's on an estimated operating budget for Sandag this year at $1 billion. And they want, again, the issues that will be in front of the board are Oti Mesa East, approving a regional plan minus the road user charge, regional development projects, and specifically housing was discussed. And while you may not think housing has anything to do with Sandag, this is one of the responsibilities the state has pushed down. And a smart corridor pilot program. They didn't go into a lot of detail about that because they said it's a pilot program. So, you'll get information on that moving forward.
I need your notes, and I do have a question about Oti East. Where is it in the regional transportation plan?
They did not specify.
I don't think it is. Interesting.
Not in the current. My assumption is it will be part of the 25 plan.
Interesting. Just moving up new priorities and getting rid of old priorities, even when we voted on them to tax ourselves.
There was quite a bit of commentary about how the road user charge is no longer going to be part of the plan, but it sounds like my opinion and shared with others is that that can has been kicked up to Sacramento to be the heavy on that one. So, there will be a road user charge, it's not initiated locally.
Well, there is going to be that one. That one's still in the 2025 plan, or 2021 plan. In the 2025 framework, it was supposed to be on the agenda on Friday, which I don't see it on there. So, I'm not quite sure how that's going to work. Okay, good to know. And then, you also had audit, correct?
We had an audit committee meeting last week. We're kind of in a position of limbo. In January, we brought forth to the executive committee the proposal to have two of the public members who have been identified as the recruiters to look for a new independent auditor. She is retiring. At that executive meeting, it was posed by one of the board members to hold off on this, to consider looking for outside auditing, which is an assumption based on Policy 39 of the Sandag policies, but it's in direct conflict with AB 805, which is what was initiated to cause us to have an independent auditor. The problem is, Policy 39 also dictates the terms for the public members. And the two public members that were identified to do the recruiting are due to be termed out. So, the timeline was set up so that they could do this work before they left. And now, with the delays going on two months, that it looks as though they may not be able to do that because we're still waiting to hear if we're going to continue, as we should, with an internal auditor or go externally, and then those recruiters would no longer be part of the audit committee. So, we're looking at two different, three different things. An internal auditor, which we're supposed to have, an external auditor, which is not ideal. And if we lose our two public, two of the three public members who have vast experience in auditing, then who do we use to identify the next auditor, whether it is internal or external? Some of the machinations of the members of the executive committee board. I listened to the arguments as to why they wanted it delayed, but it caused a great deal of consternation with the employees of Sandag who work on the audit team, sitting there listening, wondering if they're going to have a job tomorrow. It was a little traumatic for them.
As I said, slow walking. Okay.
Before we move on, since housing was brought up, I do want to announce that Sandag is having a housing seminar tomorrow virtually. It's tomorrow, March 15th, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., and it's titled Housing Leadership and Infrastructure: Rethinking Social Housing for a California Context. So, if anybody is interested, I think they are still accepting registrations, and it's virtual.
Okay. Thank you. League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove. You've been busy the last couple of weeks.
Been a little busy. First of all, I would like to commend Councilmember Nunez. She was, as the first vice president, put in charge of the meeting since our president was not able to make the meeting, did a fantastic job of herding cats and keeping us on track. We talked a little bit about our budget and some administrative things, but the notes I took, and it's going to take me a second or two to go through them, really have to do with our legislative update. And these are all pending motions, mostly at the assembly. And I have the entire docket. If the council wants, I can send it to Phil, and he can email it out. But the ones that I pulled for tonight, Senate Bill 43 discovers or discusses behavioral health and redefines gravely disabled, which is one of the protocols we use for taking somebody in an involuntary commit. It will now include the inability to seek shelter and medical care, which goes to those people who are homeless and are not responsive to what are apparent physical needs and element, being out in the elements. So, that would be an option to take somebody against their will and for that prescribed service that was deemed necessary. AB 1490, allow adaptive and reuse of existing buildings to create new residential units and require local government to guarantee that 100% of units be made available for lower-income households, of which 50% for very or extremely low income, including the provision that all entitlements and applicable permits be approved within 30 days and a waiver of local billing and permit fees.
Wait, who's paying for those two things?
I see our city manager over there smiling like the Cheshire Cat on that one, but it gets better. AB 1532, an office to residential conversion, meeting certain requirements, a use by right in all areas regardless of zoning. Project is exempt from impact fees not directly related to the conversion, and payment on any applicable fees can be paid out over a period of 10 years.
Who's paying for that?
AB 1630, rhetorical, Mayor. AB 1630.
Being serious, actually.
If I had an answer. AB 1630, planning and zoning student housing projects would prohibit local government from prohibiting a dormitory on any real property within one-half mile of a university campus and would require local government to classify student housing as a permitted use on all real property within one-half mile of a university for zoning purposes. Proposed housing would be considered as a ministerial approval process without discretionary review or a hearing of certain conditions as to occupancy armament.
You have no architectural oversight on that?
Apparently not.
Oh, Lord.
SB 4, planning and zoning higher education and religious institutions. This kind of bridges that gap since the first one was about universities. Would require that a housing development project be a use by right upon request of an applicant who applies for streamlined approval on any land owned by an institution of higher education or religious institution if the development satisfies specific criteria, and that criteria is laid out in the expanded format. SB 7 talks about RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, and those are the numbers that we receive from the state through Sandag on the number of residential units we have to build by a certain time.
3,300, 3,200, sorry.
By 2029? Is that correct?
Yes.
So, I'll use the abbreviation. This would require RENA assessments to include homeless as an income category for purposes of establishing a RENA plan.
Mandate, mandate, mandate. Sorry.
Councilmember Nunez? I hit all the lowlights. Did you have anything you wanted to offer?
It was a whirlwind, but they did record the meeting yesterday. If anybody's interested, the meeting was held virtually. So, they do have a recording of it, and we did get handouts of the.
The legislative analyst speaks very quickly, so having the handouts ahead of time was a big help. So, I was simply highlighting the ones that I thought would be most interesting to the council and again, to our city manager.
I wouldn't say interesting. Troubling.
Trouble.
Troubling.
And we, I don't know if I missed it. They did say that the league would be reaching out to the cities with higher educations, with universities to obviously help with the advocacy piece on the bill that's being proposed.
So, right now, we're looking at. So, so right now, we're looking at City of San Marcos, City of San Diego, and I think maybe the City of La Mesa for San Diego State, and then UCSD, which is all completely within the City of San Diego.
So does it, so it only includes CSU, not Palomar?
Well, so...
It doesn't seem like that's, that's clear yet.
No, they, they did talk about...
Because then I guess Oceanside, too.
We did talk about that other measure, the second measure. And so then, you know, I think we specifically talked about San Marcos, where you have University of St. Catherine, St. Augustine, Palomar College, Cal State San Marcos. A lot of our cities have for-profit universities. So if you draw a half-mile radius on any one of those, you could effectively incorporate an entire jurisdiction. And when I say cities, this was specific to any city, county, district, so anywhere in the state.
Always.
And we do have a legislative update tomorrow, a virtual one, so...
I'll be attending that one.
Okay, I've signed up for it, but I wanted to do the Sandag, and it's at the same time, so...
If you take Sandag, I'll take League. I think if it's one-thirty to three, about the same time.
Yes.
Okay.
But they, I was informed that they are going to be recording the League update, so that'll be available also.
Terrific.
Do you mind sending those links out? Jack or someone?
Sure.
All right, thanks. Maybe just the newsletter of Friday would be good. Okay, anything else?
That ends my report.
Again, I want local control back. I'm going to say it every time. North County Transit District.
We meet on Thursday.
Okay. North County Dispatch, Joint Powers Authority, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting's in May.
Okay. And do we know when dispatcher appreciation?
It's this week, I think. Amber, is it this week? Yeah.
See, I knew, like I intuitively knew it was around this time.
I saw, I saw something posted on social media. It was yesterday about appreciating our communication specialists in a lot of different areas, too.
Okay, Clean Energy Alliance.
That would be me again as mayor. So we met remotely on March second, and when I say we, it was our CEO, the chair, and I'm the vice chair, so the three of us met with, remotely with the CEO and all the executive staff of SDG&E to discuss some issues of concern for the, not just the CEA, but CCAs. So it would be San Diego Community Power in general. And so one of the issues we had was, and it will be affecting us next month, when our residents receive their bill, there'll be a line item for CEA, and it will have a dollar amount attached to it, and it's not an additional charge. It's simply identifying the CEA as the provider for the energy. So in previous conversations, SDG&E told us it was just very problematic to try and adjust that data, but they now say they have the ability to change the software, and they will have a clear information line on the billing in place by the third quarter of twenty-twenty-three. So we may get some initial questions, and if they come in, I'm happy to answer them. But by the end of the year, we should have, that line item will simply identify that we are now the, the provider, and that they are, they are providing the transmission lines. The other one was subscriber data, which is a big issue for us because it talks about the billing process in general and how our, how our residents are being serviced by SDG&E. Previously, it was an issue that was going to be extremely expensive. The capital cost to extract individual data simply for the Clean Energy Alliance in the several cities, they estimated it would cost approximately three million dollars. They've pulled money from other budgetary items, and they're going to take that cost on and have that provided to us. There will be ongoing subscription costs for the data, and it will be stored in the cloud in the Amazon Web Services, AWS, so that anytime if we have a question to help one of our residents with their bills, we'll be able to pull down the data and work, work through them instead of having to go to SDG&E. Our CEO will be presenting to the San Marcos Planning Commission this coming Monday on March twentieth, and I will be here with her. And we have a table at the March twenty-eighth, San Marcos Farmers Market, and our next board meeting is Thursday, March thirtieth.
Councilmember and Mayor, if I can add, Barbara, the CEO, will also be presenting. The Clean Energy Alliance has confirmed that they'll be at San Marcos Elementary on March twenty-first, so...
Okay, good.
A week from today. It'll be an evening presentation starting at six P.M., and that's at San Marcos Elementary. So they will be there presenting and there to answer any questions, and it's open to the community if anybody...
I'm hoping that'll be in English and Spanish.
Yes, we, we actually have a contract translator. Karen will be there, as she was at the senior center last month to, to help with that translation service.
Great.
Yes, so it's open to the community at San Marcos Elementary.
Okay, excellent.
And going back to the dispatcher, Jack was able to confirm that the dispatcher's week is scheduled for April ninth to the fifteenth.
Oops.
Oh, nine to the fifteenth, okay. Hmm, maybe not right. Dr. Steezy. Okay, well, moving on, Councilmember, it's you again, business visit.
It was fantastic. I earned, I earned my forty dollars this month.
Is it forty? I think it's less.
Before taxes.
Two cents an hour.
Amanda and Tess and I met with Martin Langmead over at APT. APT Designs, a very interesting man. He, he's been in town now for, well, he's been here since two thousand and seven, but his, his history goes back to England where, where he's from and was, had his professional program. And in England, they have interior architects because of the different design structure and the age of some of the buildings. Doing a remodel is a little more in-depth than what we would have here. That's not really a degree or licensing component here in the States, but he's adapted. And now he specializes in doing interior design, but not residential design per se. And as he, as he told us, if, if somebody had a large-scale project within a residence, he could help them out. But he specializes in apartment complexes, large commercial operations. We saw some of the, the work he's done up at UC Riverside.
Interior design, too.
Interior design, and we, we got a very nice tour of...
Swatches.
Right, everything, everything from flooring to walls.
All the finishes.
And he's, he's an old, not old, but he is an old-school draftsman. He does not use CAD. His staff uses CAD. He does all of his planning pen and ink, or pen and paper, rather. We saw some examples sitting around. It was pretty interesting. In two thousand and eight, he lost all of his clients and moved his, moved his business into a home office where he lives in Santa Lejo. Over time, he was able to move back into commercial space and has served clients across the nation. They've been at their location on Loma Linda, Linda Vista, Linda Vista, for about five years. Number of employees fluctuates, but it's generally between ten and twenty, and depending on the workload and the economy. COVID difficulties with tracking products led to major problems with receiving items needed to complete design projects, and this led Martin and his wife to start a warehouse function of the business. They were doing some just-in-time, but when, you can't rely on the products being there, and then when they arrive, there's nobody to offload, and then when they do offload, there's nowhere to store, and then when a customer needs it but can't come get it, it led to some considerable problems. So they decided to cut out essentially that middleman and do the warehousing themselves. They do completed projects, and they're all very different as a design project specific to location, theme, and building. He estimates approximately twenty-five hundred decisions are made in the design of an apartment complex. He's both a business owner and a resident of San Marcos. His children grew up in our school district. Very proud of the community and how it has grown. He could not say enough great things about our city. The one regret he has is of all the projects he's done and all the places where they've lived, his kids will always say, there's Dad's project, there's Dad's project. He has not done, completed a project or initiated a project in the City of San Marcos. So he's looking forward to that as, not a milestone, but as another way to say how much he likes it and wants to stay. So he's in the process right now of looking, when I say looking for work, I think everybody's looking for work, but he is available if somebody needs that special work on scale. So I know Tess has already got some things in the hopper to help him out, and it's that communication and relationship that makes it a success. Thank you, Mayor.
Nice, thank you. All right, San Marcos Creek Project update.
I'll defer to Councilmember Musgrove, if that's okay.
Yes, there's rain, and we have water in the creek.
I was, I was at, I was at my...
It's a good lead-in.
I was, I was at an office today, and I had a perfect view of the, the bridge. Didn't look like it was fully concrete yet.
Speaking of the bridge, we, well, we were hoping to pour it tomorrow. We're not going to pour it tomorrow, so that's probably going to be pushed off till later in the month. You just can't push those off a day. There's a lot of logistics that goes into the amount of concrete that will be pouring. Grading along Discovery at Joy Courts, getting close to being finished, that's been a difficult part of the project, so hopefully that gets done pretty soon, and we can make a more perm, not permanent, but a paved, temporary connection there to get people through to the end of the project. We're continuing to fill along Discovery to get it up to grade. Utilities are all in, and then the connections are being installed to get to the residential folks along Discovery in that area. Soundwell on the west side is still under construction. The storm drain on Vie Veracruz is finished, and we have some habitat work. It's bird nesting season, so we'll be out there making sure to protect the areas where the birds may come and nest this spring. So, yeah, so the, the weather delay is continuing with the rain that's in the forecast, so can't do anything about that.
So what's that picture?
I'll have to defer to Isaac on the specifics of the picture. Looks like a culvert. Looks like a, one of the main storm drains.
Okay. All right. Any council commentary this evening? Seeing none, I guess this meeting is adjourned. And if you kids need to have any signatures for your school papers, come on down.